Uh, twenty second. Six hours.
I'd like to call to order the city council meeting, March twenty first, two thousand twenty four, five oh one Main Street at five thirty P M. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call? Crenshaw, Walker.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Holtman.
Here.
Dade.
Here.
Andrews.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Greenwald.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Item number four, mayor's correspondence. Uh, Friday, March twenty second, two thousand twenty four, the Christian Brothers Band, the oldest high school band in the United States, will be performing at the Grand Theater at seven o'clock P M. Admission is free. Um, item number two is Missouri, uh, music trivia fundraiser for the backyard alley band fest, and it is at seven P M. At the Knights of Columbus Hall. On Saturday, March twenty third, there's a community visioning at the Keokuk Lib- Library. Um, anybody that is mobily impaired or an older adult that would like to have some, um, input into the visionary part, um, nine to ten o'clock at the library, and parents from ten fifteen to eleven fifteen. Also, the city is looking for two business owners on Main Street to join the Architectural Design Review Commission, and we need one person for City Planning Commission and one person for the City Board of Adjustment. Um, before I, um, end this, I'd like to, um, re, uh, say that, um, it was very nice for us to stand for our pledge allegiance and see that our younger people stood too, and also our really young person over there knows the whole thing and recited it with us, and that's great for our community, great for our, um, future. As always, eat, drink, and shop local, and kindness matters. Item number five, it's a citizen's request. Um, this, if there's anyone here that needs to come forward, please come forward, state your name and your address, and, um, take like five minutes, not more, and well, if you are going to repeat, try to not everybody say the same thing, and let's see if anybody comes forward.
We're gonna have a party up here today. They're really excited. My name is Amanda Rogers. I am here with the Best You Coalition. We are substance use prevention, healthy lifestyles, mental health, I don't know, we encompass a lot of things. Um, we are a volunteer group, um, and we are currently funded with the Drug Free Communities Grant here in Keokuk. Um, we do a lot of really good things. I feel like we've been very busy, which is not a bad thing. Um, in front of you, I've got, um, kind of my usual update page and our new brochure, which is a little bit more comprehensive, um, and a little bit, I think, easier to be understood. Um, I'd like to thank Mr. J. Scott for that picture on the front. He donated that to us, so, thank you, Mr. Scott. Um, before I kind of turn it over to my young friends here, um, I just want to talk about a couple of things. Um, we have something called the Shine Hope Company coming to speak at one of our meetings in May. They have taken this idea of hope and what it is and kind of turned it into something scientific, something that can be measured. Um, and they are gonna come speak to us about how to mobilize and bring hope to a community. It's a free event. You can attend online or in person. Um, you guys have a flyer about that, and I can also share that publicly. It's all over our Facebook page as well. So, we would love to have all of you guys attend. I think it's gonna be really neat, um, and just an inspiring bit of information. Um, one of the things that we do as the Best You Coalition is partner with local law enforcement for compliance checks. We do alcohol compliance checks with them, and the state funds nicotine tobacco compliance checks. We provide merchant manager binders to every business that sells or serves alcohol, nicotine, or tobacco. I don't know if you are aware, but currently there are thirty-nine merchants in Keokuk alone. There are a hundred and fifteen in our county. That's a lot. That's a lot of binders. Took me three days for Keokuk. Um, the reason I'm bringing this up is because while I was visiting all these stores, I saw some things that were disturbing. Um, lots of products that are unregulated, have no age restrictions. Our young people can go in and purchase them without I D. Um, we know from compliance checks that we have had, um, we had seven alcohol merchants fail compliance checks in the last six months, and two nicotine tobacco merchants fail. That means they are not I D'ing properly. They are not I D'ing young people as they come into the business. And I know nine total out of thirty-nine doesn't sound like a big number, but when you're talking about your kid, it's a big number. So, one of my young friends here is gonna talk a little bit about some of the things that we have found, um, and she's got some pictures to share with you guys. If you don't mind, they'll send those around too.
Sorry, I'm short. Hello, I'm Harper Wesley, and I am with the Young Leadership Group, um, Run Out of the Y. Um, I'm here to talk about the store and like how she was talking about with the numerous, how you can just go in, and even with my age, like she took her son, and, and he was not I D', of course, but, um, that's personally not acceptable because you shouldn't even be able to let a kid into those kind of stores, and it's just not right. So, here I have, um, my friend Carson, she's also part of this group, and she's gonna pass around some pictures of what is actually in the store. So, um, in those pictures, you can see, um, there's the just normal looking like Coke cans and pop cans. They're actually storage containers for people's stashes. So, most, it, so most people think it's just normal household and daily items. They're not. They're basically, yeah, stash cans hidden in plain sight. So, um, a co- like a week ago, maybe a couple of weeks ago, there was, at parent teacher conferences, we had, um, the Hancock County Addiction Coalition. They came and did a whole, like, model, basically, on a, um, teen's bedroom, and it had most of the stuff that are in the pictures, and it made, like, the parents that were there, and they went through it, and they saw, like, there was in the Listerine bottle, it just looked like normal Listerine. It was alcohol. And so, there's, everything's like hidden in plain sight. So, like teens and all those things that, like, nowadays are very for popularity and all that stuff, it's really bad, I gue- like, people know that, of course, but I feel like with that just alone, you can see how many things and that affects people in different ways, like, how just those things alone, like, can affect some people a lot, because, like, even parents, like, just say, like, if parents don't know that kids are doing that stuff, then it could cause them harm almost, because if something were to happen to that child alone, maybe, it would affect them, of course, because it is their child. So, it's really if, what, if your one doing is affecting a whole lot of people, and I feel like that, um, that it's just a big thing in our community now, and it really shouldn't be, so, yeah.
I don't know if you caught that, but Ms. Harper here is only in seventh grade. She's very articulate, and she knows her stuff. Um, so, with all of that presented, we would like to present kind of an ask. Um, I don't know how much power, I don't know where the power lies, so forgive me if it's not with you, but I know you guys approve and, um, approve continuations of alcohol, tobacco, nicotine licensing. Um, we're asking that you guys ask owners questions. What are they planning on selling exactly? And what are their fail safes, I guess, or safeguards to make sure that all of their staff are properly I D'ing? Um, we offer a free training. That's a really great way to make it free for them. So, I mean, training is always good, and it empowers their employees. So, we just ask that you ask questions before approving continuations or new licenses, and then after they've been approved, go to these businesses and check it out, see what they're really selling, because you might be a little surprised by what you find in there. I have one more student who's gonna talk about some of the opportunities that she's had, and some of them have had, through the Best You Coalition, and then we'll kind of get out of here.
All right. I'm Sierra King, I'm a senior. As a part of the Best You Coalition and the Youth Leadership Group, we have been given many opportunities to better our communities, such as meeting with our senators in Washington and attending the Capitol Day on the Hill. We spread awareness of alcohol, nicotine, and tobacco and marijuana to prevent teen drug use.
She got to, actually, several of these kids have gone on trips with us. We took several, um, to Washington, D.C. for the CADCA National Forum. They spoke with our senators, our representatives in person about what's happening in Lee County. They did a great job. We also got to go to the Day on the Hill here in Des Moines, and again, talked to senators and representatives about what's going on in our county, and they did, they did great. So, just really good things going on with our youth, and I think it's always good to hear that. So, thank you guys very much. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you, ladies, and, um, understand that, um, it's always nice to have, um, input from our younger generation.
Chief Baum, I, I've got a quick question. Um, in reference to the, um, not carding as much as possible, uh, do you currently have any operations set up to where, um, because I remember, uh, as a bartender for many years, you know, we were always, always had to card every time, because there might be that sting where someone looks old enough, but it turns out that they're not, and you get caught with a big fine, you know, and everything, and that alone is a pretty big incentive as a business owner to card every single time. And I was just wondering, is that something that might be used to help with this problem?
Yeah, we, we do do compliance checks, um, annually, and that's a part of what Ms. Rogers talked about. Uh, we haven't done any additional, uh, outside of the, the annual checks with A B D. Um, I guess that's something, something we could look at if, if there's a significant problem. I will say that this last go-round, um, there were seven violations in, in reference to alcohol, but the check before that, I don't believe there were any, or maybe there was one or two. Um, so, it's gonna ebb and flow a little bit depending on, uh, the clerk that's working the actual, the counter, um, but the training is available and should be utilized.
Thank you.
Item number six, the consent agenda. Um, I'd like a motion to amend the agenda to omit, um, item number eleven. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Um, we'll go on then. Minutes of the regular city council meeting and council workshop, workshop of March seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Cash receipts and treasuries report for February twenty, twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving a liquor license for BPO Elks Lodge Number One Oh Six, Twenty Two, Twenty Two Hundred, Lincoln Avenue, Class F retail alcohol license, effective April first, two thousand twenty-four, pending dram. Resolution approving a liquor license for Angelini's Ten Oh Six Main Street, Class C retail alcohol license with outdoor service, effective April first, two thousand twenty-four. Appointment of Kimber Tender to the Human Rights Commission fulfilling a term to expire September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-six. Appointment of Becky Crenshaw, Pam Broomhall, Kira Krosinski, Dave Baum, Martha Neff, and Joyce Glasgow to the Architectural Design Review Commission, term to expire June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-six. A motion to pay bills and transfers listed in the register's number fifty-three ninety-four through fifty-three ninety-six. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda, including the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, now's the time and the place for a public hearing awarding a contract for the South Eighteenth Street Water Main Reconstruction. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Gate City on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. I am opening the public hearing at five forty-four P M.
So, I'm filling in for Brian. He's unable to make it tonight. Uh, we received two bids for this. Uh, the low bid was with Lewis Excavating, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred ten dollars, thirty cents. Keokuk Contractors also submitted a bid, four hundred seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the city is gonna reject both bids. They, they are both way over the engineer's estimates on this of three hundred and thirty thousand.
Any further discussion? City clerk, any written comments or objections have been received? There being no further comments or objections on the matter, I will close the public hearing at five forty-five P M. Item number eight, consider resolution awarding a contract to Dansco to construct restrooms at Ram Park. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Two bids were received on Friday, March eighth, two thousand twenty-four, to construct the restrooms at Ram Park. The low bid was submitted by Dansco of Keokuk, Iowa, in the amount of ninety-one thousand, eight hundred. The restrooms are to be completed by June seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Staff recommends approval. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Is this, um...
Go ahead.
Are these going in place of the restrooms that are already there, or is this a totally new building altogether? Where's it gonna be located at? I see.
Any more discussion? Item number nine, consider resolution designating Quincy...
We need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, consider resolution designating Quincy Medical Group and T S S Incorporated offices located in Keokuk to provide professional services for the city of Keokuk. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Consider designating Quincy Medical Group at sixteen oh three Morgan Street, Suite Three, as the occupation, occupational health providers for the city of Keokuk, and T S S Incorporated at nine oh six Main Street, as the collector for administering D O T-related drug testing and pre-employment and reasonable cause of suspicion testing to the city of Keokuk employees. Staff recommends approval. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number ten, consider resolution to rescind agreement with Keokuk Community School District for the Gowing Tennis Courts. Do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion? For the discussion with the city council, the Keokuk Community School District and the city of Keokuk have agreed to dissolve the Gowing Tennis Court agreement. The Gowing Tennis Courts located at the confluence of Plank Road and Middle Road are owned by the school district, but the city agreed to share the cost of improvement, improvements through an agreement entered into on May first, nineteen eighty. The city attorney has drawn up a mutual recession agreement and release that requires the mayor's signature, and the city will no longer be responsible for the costs related to the tennis courts. The staff recommends that the mayor sign the contract. Do I have any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number twelve, consider resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the letter of support for Community Catalyst Building Remediation Program Grant for the redevelopment project located at ten hundred Main Street. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Is this... Second. Charlie Price, A T T H Group Incorporated, L L C, has been invited to submit a full application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a Community Catalyst Building Remediation Program Grant. A letter of support is required from the city. The Prices have achieved significant milestones, including installing a new roof and windows and completing demolition on the first and second floor, and currently revi- revitalizing the first floor. The grant will fund tuck, will fund tuck pointing the exterior and finishing two, possibly three apartments. Staff approves. Do I have any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number thirteen, council liaison reports.
Um, the Oakland Cemetery Initiative is, um, planning on moving forward with a pavilion to be built, uh, for Oakland Cemetery, so people, the public could use it for funerals and, and different, um, I guess, outdoor events that you'd want to use at the cemetery. Um, we do need help placing the signs, so if anyone is available to help, uh, do posts, that will be probably April sixth, um, but we'll have more about that. Um, uh, we'll post about that. And then the Keokuk Little League is still doing sign-ups this Saturday and next Saturday from ten to two, and there is a trivia night, also April sixth, you know, keeping the calendar busy, that night, uh, if you are interested.
Anyone else? Item number fourteen, staff reports.
Police Department has secured a civil service testing date of May twenty-fifth. That'll take place at nine A.M. at Keokuk High School. Um, the only thing that's gonna be a little bit different is the mile and a half will be ran as a road course, because the track will be, uh, in the process of being replaced.
Item number fifteen, new business. Item number sixteen, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Take five, and then we'll come back to the workshop.
I'd like to call for somebody. I'm, I'm gonna find out. I know his parents. I'm gonna find out. I'll find out. Really like to play ball. Well, we can't help those things. I get that. They're used to that, right?
Part of the job.
You feel better, don't you? Feel better?
Yeah, so if you just want to call it, say, you know...
I'll find out.
There's children, parents who would love that. Want as many players as they can get.
And I think, you know, if parents say to me, I can't do it, I'd say, well, I can do it.
If you'd like to know, I'll get the ball.
I'll find out.
Yep, I'm... Here we go, guys. A call to order the council workshop, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, in your package, you have the budget review, and that is the first item.
So, tonight I'd like to go over the proposed revenue so far, and, uh, then we'll have a, a discussion about the hotel motel tax. then we'll have a, a discussion about the hotel motel tax revenues and requests. Uh, we're getting close to completion on the budget, and we will probably ask for a complete budget workshop first part of the second week of April. We are still getting, uh, a lot of our costs in. I think yesterday or the day before, we just got our, uh, ICAP insurance. It was a, quite a blow. It was a forty-two percent increase. We got our health insurance information last week. Got that finalized. That was, uh, a little bit better than expected. That was about four percent across the board. We just ratified four union contracts or TA'd them the week before that. So we're getting close, but I just go, I'll go over the revenues real quick, just so everybody gets an idea of where we're at. So when we start out on the first page, uh, we're looking in at the revenues from the police services, and, uh, they'll receive some grants, some fees that they charge, uh, reimbursements, forfeitures and fines, and, uh, Chief Baum's keeping me updated on the fines since they switched over. That number may increase a little bit, but, uh, the projection for next year is a total of thirty-eight thousand dollars. You'll see that at the bottom of those, uh, columns. Uh, the task force at the bottom of that first page is a grant that is received to fund the task force officer. That number decreases every year and a half steadily for a long time. That's a ten thousand. A GTSB grant is a state grant. That's eight thousand. And then police cops in school is partial payment from the school district for a school resource officer. Uh, the fire inspection charges are down. So we're at a thousand dollars on that and four thousand dollars on the fees that the fire department is collecting, or a total of five thousand dollars in that fire administration section. Uh, the emergency corps, we have approximately five hundred dollars in contributions from private sources, donations. Animal services, the projection is about seventeen thousand. They're up a little bit on all the license and fees. So we're at seventeen thousand for animal control. Uh, streets and roadways, that total on the first page is seventy thousand is, uh, comes from the state for the city maintaining some of the, the main roads that go through town. Uh, then that, we have the airport after that, so the, that number is four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty. The largest part of that is, you can see the second number down is two hundred and fifty-four thousand. That's, uh, projected grants coming through to the airport. Uh, bulk fuel sales are projected at eighty-five thousand. Uh, the library totals. Uh, for charges and fees, you can see it's two thousand. County payments to the library are seventy-eight hundred. Monica told us that they may be seeing a reduction in that, but she has not confirmed that yet. Uh, the total there is ninety-nine hundred dollars. The George M. Verity is the next one, the River Museum. The total revenues projected for that are about six thousand. That seems to be pretty consistent every year. Uh, the next is the Grand Avenue Theater, or the Grand Theater. The rentals generally are, are about eight thousand dollars. They're a little bit ahead this year so far. Seems like they're having some more events down there. Donations, uh, are at six thousand. They, they run all over the place. Uh, the fundraisers generally are about ten thousand dollars. Uh, there is a donation of fifteen thousand that seems to be pretty regular, and then the Miller Trust subsidy is always the same amount at six thousand. So the Grand Theater is forty-five thousand total. Next page is the Union Depot. Uh, there's about two thousand dollars in donations that's projected. That number is down a little bit. Uh, Tolemy Park rentals are at four thousand. Uh, we should stay on track with that. They're getting some work done out there already to improve that facility. Overnight camping fees generally is closer to thirty-five hundred. Looks like we're going to be a little bit higher this year, but, uh, the total of that, those rentals is seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, Joyce Park rentals or fees are a total of two hundred dollars. Then we have some, uh, investment on perpetual care for the cemetery. The interest rates are higher there, so we're looking at about eighteen thousand there. Uh, seven thousand for the labor and then four thousand in lot sales for a total of twenty-nine thousand. Hotel motel tax is, uh, all over the place. It's estimated at two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Uh, vacant property registration is estimated at two thousand. That's going down as that program kicked off. It was higher, but obviously it's, uh, been effective, so it's driving that number down. Building and demolition permits is thirty thousand. Uh, plumbing permits, one thousand, and then we have some miscellaneous permit fees going down through there for a total of, uh, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty in the planning and zoning. Uh, the next page is page nine, towards the bottom. Uh, there'll be a transfer in of, uh, one point four. Bless, you're gonna have to refresh my memory on that one.
So the refunds general insurance, I'm assuming, we have budgeted certain things here. Just curious what that line is, um, zero zero one, six six zero four seven one five? It's on page nine.
Which one are you asking about, Shelley?
The one, um, zero zero one, six six zero four seven one five, refunds, general insurance. There's zero in our current budget, but when you look over the years, there's a significant amount of money that has come in that. I'm assuming that's insurance claims?
Yeah, those are all insurance claims.
That's what I figured. Do we have any insurance claims that we are waiting on for the fiscal year that would come in in fiscal year twenty?
Not that I'm aware of. I think.
I just was asking.
We have one pending, but it's, it should be here.
It should be for June thirtieth. Okay. Okay, thanks. That's why I was just curious. Thanks.
Uh, property tax general, so this is probably going to look a little bit different this year since they consolidated, uh, that into the ACGFL, I believe it's called. Uh, so that's two point two. Uh, they figured that without, um, the utility taxes. So as you go down through the columns, you'll see where they add back in the utility taxes. Um, we have beer permits in there, uh, cigarette permits, uh, franchise fees. That's the overall number, but keep in mind we rebate off of that also. Uh, so that's a one point two. Uh, rebates are significant on those. Uh, interest on the investments in general is two hundred thousand. Leases in general is twenty-two thousand. State grants are projected at one point eight eight five. I think the majority of that is the grant that Pam's looking at. Is that correct? I thought the trail grant was the one point. Okay. This here's the federal one now. Okay. Uh, business property tax replacement, the, they've changed the formula on that, so, uh, we're going to see a reduction in some of that and an increase in some others. Uh, we have some donations. We have some fireworks. Refunds general is sixty thousand. And then we don't have any projected sale of property. Couple of prospects, but nothing for sure. Uh, so that grand total was six million, nine hundred, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Uh, the next page, we have parks improvements of fifteen thousand. That's the only item on that list. Uh, we have the road use tax on the top of page thirteen. That's one point three one six million. And that would be the total for that column. Uh, property tax for, uh, all the employee benefits, uh, through the employee benefit levy. Uh, it starts out at two point three million, and then they separate again the utility taxes, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Uh, we do have some business property tax replacement, um, commercial industrial, and we do have some general refunds in that column. The total in the employee benefit is two point eight eight million. Towards the bottom of that page, you'll see that sales tax being broken out, uh, ten percent, going to the, uh, human development, a hundred and forty thousand. Forty percent, uh, goes to the infrastructure, five hundred and sixty thousand, and then fifty percent for the property tax relief at seven hundred thousand, and that brings us back to that one point four million. So page sixteen, we get into, uh, some of the TIF revenues that we currently have going on, uh, property tax relief, um, or senior housing loss. That's about nineteen thousand. We have the Twin Rivers Drive TIF district that will bring in es- an estimated one point five, four million. So the tax increment financing total is one million, five hundred, eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and four dollars. That is a significant increase.
Is that increase because we, we changed how the, the urban renewal area? Why is that increase so much?
The TIF funding went from about a million one to one point five. So we, it looks like we asked for the maximum amount of TIF funding that was available, and, uh, based on the calculations that, that they gave us, that's what it.
Okay.
That's what it was.
I wasn't sure because we changed our.
All right, so the next one is scattered through several pages, so we have refunds for the economic development grants, uh, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then if you go to the middle of page eighteen, we're seeing some loan repayments, a hundred and twenty thousand, and refunds with housing and urban renewal of thirty thousand, and then the total for that. Uh, what it will do is nine hundred, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars under economic development, and that's on page nineteen. We have some rent, some state grants, uh, local grants, library program fees, and some donations. That brings our library trust fund total to ten thousand. That's on page twenty. I know there's a lot of zeros in between there. On page twenty-one, we have, uh, the Tolemy Fund, which is three thousand. Then we don't have another income till page twenty-three. Uh, we have the property tax from debt services, which is our long-term debt, at three million, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Again, they separate that, uh, with out gas and electric, so when they add that in, it adds another four hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine, and then the business property tax replacement, one twenty-six, four fifty-two. Uh, the total for that debt service is three million, six hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars. Then. Skip over to page twenty-six, uh, where we will transfer in some capital projects of thirty thousand. Twenty-seven thou, or page twenty-seven, we'll see our rental income of seventy thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, I think that is. Is that the majority of the Roquette money?
Southeast Iowa Development Center.
That include both rent?
It should include all, all, um, ex, um, ex lease revenue that we have. It would be fifty percent, I think, is what we had, had dealt, so.
Thank you. Uh, so the total from the Roquette building will be two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars. The next item you're seeing is two million dollars. That is a grant. Um, we just got the information on the Brownfield Grant going. It's been in progress for a long time, but I think we just made our first drawdown a couple of weeks ago, uh, to Southeast Iowa Regional Planning, uh, so that two million dollars will be spent out over the next year. Hopefully. Um, the next one is perpetual care. So cemetery lots is five thousand. That is the total on page twenty-nine. And the next one is the class one sewer fees, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand, and then the class two sewer fees of two point five million.
So I have a question about these because with the loss of ADM, when we increased our sewer fees last, that will make up for that loss of their revenue?
There's a, a combination of things. I think between, um, the, the sewer fee increase, uh, there are some permitting fees that are going to be collected. I think they're listed out separately here.
Yes.
Uh, there are some treatment plans that they have to follow, and there are some fees associated with that that will, uh, increase that fund. So some of those fees in the past, uh, were pretty low, and they've gone up to comply with the wa- the permitting, the permit issuance. Am I following that correctly, Tom? Okay.
Well, I'm just asking because I see here that we, you know, in, in prior fiscal years, we were making around, what was it, three million dollars? Is that the class one sewer fees? And now we're down to, what, four hundred and fifty thousand? So that is, that's the change in that. I just wanted to ask. No, I, no, I just wanted to ask that. That was just that change. So you did have it calculated in there. I just wanted to, like, confirm that. Okay, thank you. That was about two point five then? Or two point six?
Uh, the total on water pollution control is three million, one hundred, eighteen thousand. There's a hundred dollars in that reserve. Then we have a lot of zeros to the bottom of page thirty-three where we get into the sanitation collection fees. Uh, those are gonna, those haven't changed. Um, I think Councilperson Bryant's warning us of some more increases, but, um, that's a. that's at 1,012,500 dollars. Uh, there's a refund of a thousand. So that just adds the total to 1,013,500. That takes us over to the middle of the page on page 35. Uh, this gets into our bridge, the interest on that municipal bridge investment is estimated at 75,000. Uh, the lease is 1,119 dollars. Um, the car fee is 352,055 dollars. And that brings the bridge total to 428,174 dollars. We have a transfer in of 8,500 for 436,674 dollars total. Uh, the health insurance refund that you're seeing there, I believe is the, is that the pass-through? That's the pass-through for uh, Waterworks Insurance. Uh, so our total revenues at the bottom of page 36 is 28,766,21 dollars. So as you can tell from our revenues and our expenditures, we still have some work to do. Um, because the numbers coming in fairly recently, we're gonna be very close on our budget.
So how does that compare right now with the bottom line right now then? So what our estimated revenues are and our estimated, our first run at the, the budget, where are we at?
Yeah, so we're gonna be a, a deficit budget like always. Our ending balance will carry over. It looks like it should be fairly healthy. And historically, uh, what we budget, we always come in under. So it's gonna be pretty close to a balanced budget in the end. We will still have an ending fund that's gonna carry over for a little bit of a surplus.
So how much reserves do we have?
I don't have that all together yet.
Okay.
We'll by our next meeting though.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Any questions? Thanks a lot, Dave and Celeste. I can tell you've been working really hard. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your patience. My first go-through. A lot to remember.
Looks like you are no pro. How's that?
I'm not, I'm no pro.
Okay, so um, that is, is that all we have for the budget review then? No other questions, huh? Okay, so we're going on to item number two, which is hotel motel revenue requests.
So uh, our finance committee has been, been meeting with the Tourism Board, uh, trying to figure out if, uh, how they're gonna handle, I guess, their, the CIRC gaming money. And uh, Councilperson Greenwald was at our last meeting with tourism. And we discovered some information how they plan on operating. It is still in its infancy, so they haven't committed 100% to what their plans are. But uh, Mike wanted to have this discussion again. I'll give you a quick rundown. It's in the packets of the requests that we've had so far. So we've had the Fine Arts Council at 15,000. Uh, Convention and Tourism at 138,000. Lake Cooper, 5,000. Kilkuk Art Center, 7,140. Main Street Kilkuk, 40,000. Rand Park Pavilion, 7,500. Historic Preservation, 5,000. Care, 5,000. And Lee County Historical at 7,000. So when we discussed this um, during our, one of our budget workshops, I think the request added up to about 83, 84% of the projected revenues. The concern that the council and the finance committee had when we discussed this the first time is that with the CIRC money uh, being routed through tourism and we're gonna have a new board established for them, is how are they gonna fund some of these smaller projects? And Councilperson Greenwald, you correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, but the impression that we're gathering so far is that they are not gonna be interested in smaller requests. They are looking for major, large um, funded projects. Uh, so I think we wanted to have some discussion about these smaller ask again.
Yeah, the new CIRC board, in however its makeup is when it gets formed, uh, they had discussed how they plan on mimicking what Fort Madison does. And they do have kind of a, a list of guidelines on what is and is not eligible to request those funds. Um, so it has to be an established 501(c)(3). And then they're looking for specific projects, not so much just the, the annual fund my operational budget type of request. They're, they're looking more like, hey, what is a, a building that can be accomplished? Or something that's physical that can be created that without this money wouldn't happen? So I don't envision them considering things like the Fine Arts Council, the Art Center, um, the Rand Park Pavilion, a lot of those that are the annual requests that we have traditionally funded through the Hotel Motel Tax. So where we're at, in my opinion, is we need to figure out how much of the Hotel Motel Tax dollars we plan on spending this year with the assumption that uh, we are not going to have help from that CIRC committee to fund the things that we have historically funded on an annual basis. I know um, Dave here had thrown out a number at that meeting to try to offset a percentage of those CIRC funds no longer going into the general fund. And uh, that was what is gonna lead to the hard discussion of what are we, or are we not gonna be able to fund this year through the Hotel Motel Tax? Uh, my big worry throughout this whole conversation is that we do have entities that this is a primary part of their budget. And we've done it every year. And we're up against the wall now with having to make a decision of if we are able to fund that or not. And we haven't had an opportunity to have conversations to say we can't do this anymore moving forward. So I don't want to pull the, the rug out from anyone at one point in time. So I think collectively, we just need to come up with what is the number that we're comfortable with spending this year? And then seeing how can we step down what these requests have been so that we can achieve that level that we're comfortable with?
I think it's really unfortunate that the initial conversation with them was more so like, yes, send the small groups, let them fill out the grant. That's gonna be exciting to, to just pretty much say no. Um, but that's just my personal opinion first. I'm wondering, is there a way that we reach out to these groups and say, yes, we're aware of what? I know that they're like Main Street is a contract. But is there a way that we reach out and say, what do you need this year? If that makes sense, you know? If, if we can't give you that full amount, what would get you through?
So legally, we're required to spend 50% on tourism or community events? So then we, if we know that number, we can start with that, I would say. And then see where that distribution then could perhaps change?
Well, if we go just straight to that 50% number, we're already not funding 90% of these requests.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't even get tourism and Main Street Kilkuk.
So will tourism, because they're receiving the CIRC money, will tourism be funded in any way from that money?
No, because it'll, it'll all fund through that CIRC board, which will be a new entity. Just the complications are that entity is not established yet. And that process isn't gonna have them established until this budget year has already started. And so we have to make decisions about our budget with these unknown variables in play.
And our estimated revenue is gonna be down 200,000 dollars from last year? From CIRC funds? A CIRC fund reduction of 200,000?
Yes, roughly.
Roughly.
Where do we wanna be on how much that we spend? I mean, that's, that's the first question. We gotta, right now, we're estimating we're gonna bring in 275,000 in Hotel Motel Tax. And then um, Dave, what was the number at that budget meeting that you had thrown out? That you would like to see us try to get that down to for actual spending?
Sure, obviously the goal is 50%, but 50% is unrealistic with, you know, uh, a lock-in on tourism at 138,000 and a lock-in on Main Street Kilkuk at 40,000. I think that should be our goal ultimately, uh, to get as much of that 50% as we can. But uh, even if we come in a little, like this year might be a little higher um, towards the 300 side. But even if we're at 300, uh, that still gives us a 50%, 150,000. Um, so it's gonna be difficult, there's no doubt. And like Councilperson Greenwald said, the timing is not good at all. Puts everybody in a difficult position.
If you add all these up, we're just under 230, the way it's written right now. If we were to take 10% of that, that'd be 23,000 dollars. We'd, we'd drop right off the top of it. That'd put us down close to 2. Would that be acceptable? I mean, if we're, if we're, if we're hoping to get to 50, 275 is what we're hoping. And like you said, we really don't know because we're not sure how that's gonna affect us in the long run. But that would, if we just told each one of them, hey, you know, we need to know what you want to do with this, but we also, at the gate, we're looking at taking 10% off of what you've already asked. Can we lower that anymore? With, you know, we've already told all of our departments to come in and bring some cuts to your budget. These guys really need to do the same thing.
We could do 10%, but I don't think we'd be able to ask uh, tourism or Main Street to do the 10% reduction. So it wouldn't be quite the, the full 23,000, but it would be close.
Main Street we can't, but we can for tourism.
We can for tourism. Main Street, we have a contract tourism. We have no contract and they're not required to get 50% of Hotel Motel Tax.
Yep.
And Kilkuk, the Tourism Board, and I was discussing this with the mayor a little bit beforehand. When they were in here last year talking, um, you know, they, they also promote, or they, 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 they help out Nauvoo and they help out Montrose and they kind of push some of that. Realistically, those entities ought to be funding them as well. If they're sending stuff to Nauvoo, then Nauvoo City Council needs to give them some money. If they're sending people to Mon, to Montrose, Montrose City Council needs to give them some of that money. So if we take 10%, have them go look at the other entities, hey, can we get this from you guys? We're only, we're only talking 13,000 dollars, you know? But that way, we could drop our numbers as well. Because like Mike pointed out, you know, they may, if they want it, but we don't have it, they can want all they want, but if we can't give it to them, they're not gonna get it. So if we go into it starting out, this is what you need to do. Go talk with these other communities, Hamilton, you know, three or four towns. To ask 13,000 dollars from three or four towns is a pretty small ask. Because you can, that's a couple of 3,000 dollars each town.
I think they already leverage those funds. I don't think that you can, we can't ask for those funds. I think that they pool their own funds together. It's like Nauvoo and Montrose and all those communities have their own Hotel Motel Tax. And when we're working with them in partnership, they're pooling their funds already from my understanding. So we're not paying, you know, we're not paying for Montrose to get tourism to, they have their own tourism Hotel Motel Tax.
I understand that. But I don't think that Montrose and Nauvoo and all of them are paying any funds to Kilkuk Area Tourism Board.
Now, I would add that in the meeting when we were with the, the Tourism Board, it was implied to us that if the tourism ask were to be decreased, that they would figure out a way to make that up with the CIRC funds on their end.
Well, that's not how that works when you, CIRC funds, you're gonna have a whole separate board for CIRC funds supposedly.
They have said that they would apply essentially through that process as tourism for some CIRC.
So then they can apply for those same funds that everybody else should be able to apply for then? Why would they be?
That's what they were saying.
Okay, well then, I mean, the CIRC Board, which has representation from the city and other community and economic development organizations are gonna have to.
We're hoping that it will have a city liaison.
Well, they should have representation. From my understanding, Fort Madison, I think it's like, it's, it's like four from the city.
Initially, I thought that too, but I think at the last meeting, we were told that there would not be three members of council.
They said it was, that number was of citizens of the city, not city employees.
The initial meeting with us was three council members.
Well, in general, when it's a 501(c)(3), you have to be transparent on how people can get on that board, what those bylaws look like. We should have some influence on that because there will be representatives hopefully, and I agree, together in representing to say that this is how we want this CIRC Board to look as a community. That's what I would say.
I don't mind taking a small percentage anyway, because I mean, we've asked organizations like the library to cut significantly over the last three years.
Exactly. Everybody else is taking cuts?
Yes.
Everybody has to take cuts?
Yep. I do think that allows us maybe um, more time to get the smaller groups funded for this year. Um, but also maybe change up our um, application process maybe? Like the whole, you know, shoot for the stars, land somewhere. What would help you, what would be incredible if we were able to, but what would at least continue your operation? Just a different sort of application so that when we get it, we are given some options like, this is a project they'd like to see done, but this would keep them with, with status quo sort of thing.
I would agree with that. I think our application process ought to be similar to a grant. You know, you need to come and show us what do you really need to do with this money? What are you gonna do with this? Because, you know, fire departments and all your different, all your different first responders and all that, if they apply for state grants, they have to, they have to list exactly what they want, the exact money they want. And we ought to be at least similar to that, to not just, hey, we just want you to give us 5,000 dollars so we can operate this year. Well, that's great, but what are you gonna do with it? So I agree, we oughta maybe hone our application a little bit to where we know, you know, this is what we want to spend it. We're not gonna have every dime accounted for, obviously. But if we know you want, you know, Main Street wants 40,000 dollars, these are the different, different things we're doing this year. These are about what it's gonna cost. We need, we need some numbers. And Main Street usually is really good about that anyway, but.
Their organization is gonna present like a budget, but I, I do think, not as strenuous as a grant, because I don't want to turn anyone away. I want, if people want to try new things, they should be willing to come to the city and say, look, this is my idea. But it would be nice if we were given, I don't know, like for fine arts, for example, if it's like, this would help us do a new project, but this would at least keep our services so that we're, we're continuing to do this art fair and this and this and this.
Another thing to say too, the, the reason why we're having this conversation is because to make up for the CIRC funds no longer going in the general fund, as that steps down, we were looking at transferring from Hotel Motel Tax into general fund to help cover some of that burden, which is why then we wouldn't have the funds for all these projects that we normally do. So another way that we could look at this is, is there a different source that's not Hotel Motel Tax that we can use to help transfer into the general fund to make up for that drop in the CIRC? I don't know the answer. I'm just asking the question. But that's another way we could look at this issue instead of, because, because if we move all the money to general fund to cover CIRC, we don't need an application process because we're just not awarding money to anything that's not tourism or Main Street ever again. And it's as simple as that.
Well, I think before we would ever stop funding other things, tourism would have a hard look. Because these are tourism events that we're funding. These, these small groups are bringing tourists in. I mean, that's the point of Hotel Motel Tax in the Iowa code. These events that are asking are literally, they have to promote tourism. So I, I think looking at that budget would come, come into play if they're willing to say that they would fund themselves with CIRC money.
Well, I can't exactly speak for um, historic preservation because we haven't had this discussion. But um, we're asking for 5,000 dollars, the, the committee's asking for 5,000 dollars. But if you only give me 2,000 dollars, I'm sure that, that we're gonna be grateful for that because we don't have that. And we're gonna have to work around it and work and see what we can. And so isn't that, except for Main Street Incorporated, all the other groups should have to? I mean, it's unfortunate, but that's how it is then.
I mean, they can literally reach out to the library and, and see that, that they have had to cut significantly.
Yes.
Every department head is being asked, what do you not need? You know, these, these are only needs now, not wants.
It appears that everyone's gonna have to take cuts this year. And we're all gonna have to spread that out. And tourism shouldn't expect that they're not gonna be impacted by that as well. Because every department will be impacted. because every department will be impacted by this.
Yep.
So do we want to invite these, these groups with the small asks to come back so we can have that conversation with them? Or is that a conversation that we're able to have outside of a meeting setting, just one-on-one with staff and them, and just so that, you know, there's, there's no shock or surprises moving forward?
I think we ought to just propose, and this is, this is where I'm at, we ought to send them all a letter and propose a 10,000 or a 10% less of what they're asking. That would give us, like I said, that'd give us $20,000, or almost, almost $20,000, I think it is, less that we would be able to put in our general fund. And if we just told everyone off the bat, hey, this year, I know you asked for 15, we're going to give you 10% less than that. And let them, and see what they say. I mean, I, I agree, we ought to invite them to come to discuss that. And if they, if they can come give us legitimate, hey, if you cut us, if you take that 10%, you know, and give us legitimate reasons why they can't do that, then we can re-discuss that, but.
I don't think that there is any group that would say that.
I don't, I agree. I don't, I don't think legitimately, I don't think any of them can legitimately say, oh, well, 10% won't work. Because as she pointed out, we asked every one of our department heads to cut. And as Shelley pointed out, I don't know why these guys wouldn't be a part of that. If we asked everybody else, then these guys fall into that same category. If we're cutting everybody else's budget, these guys are the same.
Well, and these groups that are self-funded, you know, I coached color guard for years, and we were a self-funded group. They understand that a lot of it is going to be fundraising. So, I mean, getting anything is always better than nothing.
And just from our perspective, it would be good to have a decision soon. So one more thing we can shore up with the budget work. So if, if we could get a consensus from the agenda tonight, that would be great.
I would, I mean, I guess if we just want to go down the line, I'm fine with 10%. I understand that Main Street is 40.
Now, we do need to be thinking a little long-term as well, because 10% helps a little bit this year, but we're still looking at next year than saying the rest of the 90%. Yeah. Well, there, there won't be money even if they need it. That's what we're saying. Yeah.
So first thing I would suggest.
10% would be a good starting place, but if, if like Lake Cooper Foundation comes back and says, well, 10% and we can't have our fair, then there will have to be kind of a reckoning with each one of these groups as to how 10% is going to impact them. You know what I mean?
I was also going to say is that I think that we've had some increases in requests this year compared to last year. I would consider that we go back to what last year's numbers were and then cut that 10% personally, just because we also, in that aspect, you know, if we gave them $5,000 last year, they asked for 7,500 this year, well, we need to keep you at 5,000 from last year, and then we're going to take 10 off of that. Because I just think that makes it so, and I guess this is the deal, pretty much, I think there's going to have to be some staff time designated to talking to the organizations about what their actual needs are and what their wants are. Because if it's going to impact their ability to be able to, to function significantly, so then we're going to have to have a bigger conversation about it. But I would say, reaching out to them, as Dan said, Councilman Dan said, is that I think it's send a letter or an email and say, hey, we're talking about these things, this is, we need to have a conversation. And then bring that back to the council, I think would be a nice thing. Well, goal being that we try to get to $200,000 in expenditures this year.
I like it from the initial ask too. I agree.
From the ask last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I would reiterate my earlier question as well. Is there any other source that we can find funds to shift to the general fund to make up for the CERC dollars in addition, so that it's not all coming from hotel motel in the future?
I'll have to do some research on that. Yeah, but I think that's just something we'll have to, it's a, a good idea. We need to look at other, other ideas.
We have a consensus then, it sounds like?
Staff's going to be busy.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Do we, do we have the numbers that all these groups got last year? Because it seemed like most of them were basically asking what they got last year anyway, but maybe I'm wrong about that.
The majority, yeah.
We do have, we do have the numbers, so we'll be able to go back and look.
And having, and knowing that we don't, we do have a short timeline, I would recommend that we reach out as soon as possible via email or contacts and just say, hey, we need to, you know, have this conversation quickly. Because I think you said, what are we going to meet? First week or second week of April is going to be the, the coming together of the revenues and expenditures? So it's going to be a short timeline.
Yes, it will be. Thank you, guys.
Not amazing, I mean, the guy's 230,000, a little bit more, but I mean, the rest of them you're talking, 7,500, you know, 6,000, whatever.
Yeah.
I can make a bid.
Well, I think Lake Cooper. I think, seems like the Rand Park Commission, they were right at 75.
See you later.